Alkardune and the Injolintji people, traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. We extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. Please note this ordinary meeting of the Mount Isa City Council will be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I would like to welcome Evelyn and Glen Charles today from the Salvation Army. They're attending for the opening prayer.
Thank you. Thank you, oh, thank you for this opportunity. Just before I pray, I'd like to bring the verse of the day that came up, that popped up on my feed yesterday. And it said, "Trust in the Lord forever, for the Lord himself is the rock eternal." And it's a great opportunity just to remember that God's foundation is unshakable, right? With everything that's going on in our present world, you know, it's sometimes you look at it and you, it's just chaos. But we just need to remember to be able to put that aside. His strength and faithfulness endure forever. Trusting Him isn't just for today, it's a lifelong commitment to lean on His eternal stability. Let's, let this verse encourage us today to place our confidence fully in Him, knowing that His presence and promises will never fail. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity of being able to come together as the Mount Isa Council, Lord. Lord, we just pray that you will just bless the people who are here today, Lord. We pray that you will just lift them up at this time and allow them to have clear focus of what it is that you want for Mount Isa. Lord, we just pray that all decisions and activities that are decided today, Lord, may it be in your favour. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Evelyn, and also thank both of you for the good work you do in our community as well. Okay, no apologies, oh, thank you. No apologies or leaves of absent today, public participation. So we're going to go to our local charity of the month. During the month of July, Mount Isa City Council staff raised $319.70 for the local charity Paws, Hoofs and Claws Through the Casual for a Cause initiative. I'm pleased to present Tracy Pertoff from P H C, who appears to be absent today, with the certificate of donation and invite her to share a little bit about P H C. So one of us, I guess, will go and track someone down and pass over that money. And yes, I think we can all acknowledge that P H C does some good work in our community as well. So thanks to the staff for raising that funding, I'm sure they'll put it to good use. Okay, I'd like to welcome Mr Peter Bolger to take the floor. He put in a notice that he'd be addressing council today.
Hello. Thank you very much for allowing me to address the council today. There's a couple of items I'd like to bring up. First of all, the water channel along Abel Smith Drive, which is like Jurassic Park. First of all, wondering whether it's state government responsibility or Mount Isa City Council keep that water channel clean with the wet season coming. Because I like to know whether it is the council or state government responsibility, which is most important. Postcodes. I've taken, because it's a federal issue. Only got one distribution centre in Mount Isa and only one postcode. But I live in Soldiers Hill, if you look up Google, I live in Soldiers Hill, does not mention Mount Isa. Now, I couldn't care less gap or anything else. I live in Mount Isa and I feel all correspondence should include Mount Isa. And I feel council, in connection with this federal government, should always put it to the post office that they approach Google and they, we don't live in a suburb, we live in Mount Isa. People, Mount Isa City Council spends a lot of money promoting Mount Isa for tourists. But I noticed Mount Isa City Council letterheads, or not the letterheads but letters, if it goes, if you're living in a central mile street and possibly and west street, your address comes up as Mount Isa. But if you're anywhere else, like Marion Street or anywhere else, Google says you live in Mornington or Soldiers Hill, nothing about Mount Isa. And I feel that's got to be rectified, because we've got to promote Mount Isa wherever possible. And I've got loyalties to Mount Isa, but I've got no loyalties to a place called Soldiers Hill. You know, that could be in South Australia.
Okay, thank you, was it, was it just the two issues you had today?
The one.
Was it just the two issues you had today? Oh, there was one other, wasn't there? Issues, how many issues did you have today? No, there was one down the.
Well, just mine.
Yeah. But I think, I think Mr Bolger, from my experience, when you address a letter, if you put Mount Isa 4825, it just gets to where it needs to go. It's only those automatic, where it's auto-filled, you have to select the suburb with the postcode. And that seems to strike me as the same as a lot of other places. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay, yeah, we understand what you're saying, thank you for coming in. We'll take that one on board. However, what we will talk to is your issue with the drain, because that is something that we can actually influence. Yeah, so I might pass you over to the director if that's appropriate. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, we are in the process of... So we certainly understand that there's an issue with the Abel Smith drain. It is a council responsibility to maintain that. It is in the programme works to be doing shortly. We're in the process now of modifying some of our equipment to enable us to reach into the drain, clear out the silt, which is causing a lot of the, which is providing a bed for a lot of the material to grow in. But we do need to make some alterations to some of our equipment, particularly putting rubber tracks on our excavators to ensure that with the amount of movements they need to conduct, we're not damaging the road surface while we're reaching in from the top. That design doesn't have an ability to drive equipment down into the drain to clean it out. So we do need to reach in from the top, so it is slowing down the process a little bit. But certainly it is in the programme to be done very shortly, prior to wet season, to clean that drain out and take material away and clean out the silt that's accumulated in the bottom of the drain over a number of years, which will dramatically reduce the amount of material that's able to grow in that drain.
Okay, thank you Director. Thank you, Mr Bolger. You may be quick. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Obviously, we weren't able to prepare for that one, because that one is just off the cuff.
So the mayor, just want to address the issue that he brought up last time on Nurcard Street. That is the future, that, that design of rock now is all right across Australia now. It's, I see you, I understand where you're coming from. But you go through Brisbane, all those drainage is all done by that sort of design now. Whether it's successful or not, I don't know. But it is, it's the standard. I went and had a proper good look at it, and it is the standard stuff they do use.
Yeah, thanks councillor Tully, is that a long park run where the new culvert is? Yeah, I had a look at that on Saturday.
Right beside the oval there.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
And into the creek there.
Okay, we'll take that other one on notice, thank you. Righto, do I have a mover for item 5.1, minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 23rd of July 2025?
I'll just move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 23rd of July 2025 be confirmed as true and correct record.
Thank you, do I have a second for that motion?
Second, Aunt Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, would anyone like to speak to that?
Yes, I'd just like to see if we've got, there was two questions on notice with that one, just the flooring with the civic centre.
We do that in actions or?
No, it's not in actions.
Okay, no, just last time I asked a question was.
It's actually not in action, it was a question on notice. 13.1, so, but it's not in the actions.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't.
And it's listed in the minutes of the previous.
Yeah.
I think with this motion though, aren't we just moving that they're correct? Could we, will we bring that up in a separate item of the agenda?
Either or.
Either or? Oh, it's not in there.
When can I, when can I bring it up then?
Well, I can give you an answer if you like, just to get it.
Yep.
So basically, round the door and in the first quadrant, there's a little bit of lifting of the timbers. So we've asked, we've asked a contractor, because there was a contractor and then there was a subcontractor obviously, just to have a look at what we need to do to amend that. So that's, we had a look at that, I think, about a week and a half ago. So we'll be able to give you an answer on what rectification is. But it's actually slightly lifted near that doorway, where it's fairly heavily trafficked. So we do have to fix that area.
But that will be under warranty?
Yes.
You said two, was there another one?
The other one was the Abashow and that has been answered.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Coglan, did you have something?
Yeah, I asked at the workshop regarding that, the policy, the financial year procurement policy. There was section 10.7 covering the contract barriers threshold, was all crossed out. And I just wanted to check, because we voted that that was the policy, that if, to see if that was a mistake. Someone was going to look into it.
Okay, all in favour that the previous minutes are true and correct? Carrie. Do I have a mover for 6.1, outstanding, outstanding actions from the previous council meetings as at the 22nd of August 2025?
I'll just move that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from the previous council meeting as of the 22nd of August 2025.
Thank you, do I have a second for that motion?
Councillor Coglan.
Thanks councillor Coglan, does anyone need to speak to that?
I have some questions, what, can we remove, like the amenities trailer has been sold. So is it, why is it still in there, can we remove it? Okay, and can I ask, what, what is the survey in regards to graffiti management policy? Survey pending approval.
Through the chair. Council present, so administration presented to council a graffiti management policy outlining how we would approach service level for removing graffiti from council infrastructure. That policy specifically excludes graffiti on private land. The action that came out of that discussion is that the administration would undertake some work, including a survey with the community as to what council's policy for graffiti on private land should look like, as in should council take a position on it, should council resource it? And we would then bring it back to this chamber for consideration and for future resourcing if that's something that the chamber wants to do at that point in time.
Can I just also ask about that Mount Isa City Council hardware refresh finalising contract, what's that in regard to?
That's come to council.
That'll be the IT hardware.
Yeah.
Oh, IT, not.
And just through the mayor, the graffiti management policy, how are we going with that? Because it's been in there for a while now with no result.
Isn't that what, the director was just speaking to that? He's just putting out the community consultation survey, so the community has input into it before.
For the graffiti one as well, okay.
That was the graffiti one he was speaking to.
Yeah, through the chair, just to reiterate. The council has adopted a policy outlining what it will do when graffiti occurs on council property. The next step is to talk to the community around their expectation around how we respond to graffiti on private land.
Okay, thank you, so we had a mover and a second for that, no more, no further discussion? All in favour? Carrie. Okay, were there any conflicts of interest for the agenda? Sorry councillor Ballard, were you after something?
I've got a perceived conflict of interest with item 15.2.
And how will you be managing that?
I'll remove myself for the discussion and for voting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the merril minute. Since the July ordinary meeting, Mount Isa has had many memorable milestones. We've had the first Mount Isa Mines rodeo under the stewardship of the new community committee. We have seen the underground copper mine closure, with many community members finishing their decades-long careers with M I M. And we have seen the re-establishment of Rodeo Queen Ball now presented by Zonta. In January this year, I was very concerned that we may not be able to put on a rodeo, but teamwork prevailed with the support of our local member Robbie Katter, the sport of Queensland Government, in particular Deputy Premier Blaisian Minister Power. We were able to overcome adversity and the new committee was formed. On behalf of Mount Isa City Council, I'd like to acknowledge and sincerely thank all the members of the Mount Isa Rodeo Committee back in community hands. Each one of you was chosen for good reason, your history of sponsoring, volunteering, fundraising and getting things done. I'd also like to make particular mention of our own Mount Isa City Council representative councillor, John Tully, who put in amazing amount of work in the lead up to this event and during the event itself. And also I'd like to thank the community for supporting the new committee, embracing the event and turning out in droves. From the Zonta Rodeo Queen Ball, the street festival on the Wednesday night, Mount Isa City Council, sorry, street festival, the Marmon on Thursday night hosted by the Race Club. Mount Isa City Council took on the approach of doing more with less and I'd like to thank the councillors for their support and wisdom in taking this approach. Some of, some of the money saved from the street festival budget was able to be redirected to rodeo to help support the Today Show, which was widely hailed as a success. I'd like to thank the councillors for their courage in supporting this when public opinion was to the contrary. However, your vision and conviction are to be congratulated. Since last meeting, I went to Canberra as part of the town delegation to advocate for the continuation of the smelter and Townsville Refinery. This trip has been considered a success, however, that is probably a premature judgement. Although we were well received by politicians from all sides of politics as well as the media, the proof will be in the final outcome and to this time remains uncertain. I am of the understanding that the right people are in the room for the negotiations, but the expectation has been that if there is to be a national smelting strategy, it will take time to develop. So I remain confident while the negotiations continue. A man with a pram is coming up in conjunction with Park Run on the Father's Day weekend, so I'd encourage everyone to join in. Head down to Tharapath Away for the 7am start and check out the new culvert and path repairs. And council is providing a sausage chisel at that event. Last week, the CEO and I were in St George for the Western Alliance of Councils. Mayors, ministers and the opposition were in plentiful supply. I was able to present on Mount Isa's Future Ready Economy in conjunction with Juliette Verkar and this presentation was very well received. Sorry, I should have put she's a lady from the Flying Whales, she did a presentation on that. There was also a presentation by Jessica Reed, the Chief, Chief of Staff, I had COS, to the president of the Brisbane Games. This was a terrific opportunity to advocate for our own Mount Isa rodeo to become an exhibition event and we're looking forward to setting up future discussions. And that's it for me.
Let's boot.
Notices of motion, nil. Executive Services reports, do I have a mover for item 10.1, Mount Isa Christmas and New Year close down 25 to 26?
I'll recommend that council support closing the administration office, library, works depot and materials, material sales office from 12pm on Wednesday, the 24th of December 2025 and to reopen on Monday, the 5th of January 2026 on the following grounds. Number one, departments that deliver essential services, example waste management, water and sewer, infrastructure services, will have skeleton crews rostered on, pardon me, and on call over the Christmas, New Year period to cover any emergencies and to provide essential services to the city. Number two, directors to determine sufficient staff for the rostered skeleton crew as required. Three, other than statutory holidays, time taken off by staff during this period to be either flexi-time, R D O, annual leave or a combination of both. Number four, appropriate advertising to be arranged.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, do I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Thanks councillor Crowther, would anyone like to speak to that? No, all in favour? Carrie. Item 10.2, updated policies for adoption, do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council adopts the following statutory strategic policies. Number one, complaints policy version three. Number two, councillor gifts and benefits policy version four. And three, non-current asset accounting policy version three.
Thank you councillor Coglan, do I have a second though?
Second Aunt Tully.
Thanks councillor Tully, would anyone like to speak to this?
No, I think we had a good discussion at the workshop and there were a few editing problems, but we spoke with Jade and I think that'll be fixed up and corrected in the future.
Okay, thank you, all in favour? Carrie. Item 10.3, local disaster management plan, do I have a mover?
Recommend, recommendation that council approve the updated local disaster management plan version 1.7.
Thank you councillor Tully, do I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Thanks councillor Crowther, would anyone like to speak to it?
Just we're working with, with the, with the LDMP, which is the local disaster management plan and the, dealing with the Elliot Dunn and all the people with Mount Isa City Council and the disaster management, so it seems to be all working together and we hold, hold meetings quite often.
Yeah, thanks councillor Tully, and I just wanted to give feedback. I was at an event last night and I was talking to Reed from APA and he was saying that out there, I know we've had issues in the past with fire management and mitigation and that they, he's been getting together with Ergon and the railway workers to do some clearing and fire breaks out there. And he thanked the LDMG for those introductions, because he said without coming to those meetings, he wouldn't have known who to contact and who to work with to get that, I guess, pre-work done before the upcoming fire season. So I know we all go to a lot of meetings, but it's good to hear some good things that are coming out of the meetings that we, that we attend. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Jade, she fixed up an issue that we dealt with at the workshop. But I just wanted to ask the, the membership, so section 33 talks about the local disaster management group, consisting of at least one person who's a councillor, which is councillor Tully, one person nominated by the chief executive of the department, which is the emergency people, but person's appointed as members of the group by the relevant local government for the group. I think Murray is, will now come off that committee.
Murray's on sick leave, so Andrew's a deputy, so he'll just.
So Andrew's going to step up, is there anyone else from council pointed to that?
Well, I said on the committee.
Yep.
I'm the chair. Okay, all in favour? Carrie. Item 11.1, finance overview report, July 2025.
I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the July 2025 finance overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Thanks councillor Crowther, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, thanks Mayor, just a quick note on the finance overview. The July figures are still settling, they include some data from last financial year, so we're not drawing any firm conclusions just yet. That said, there's some really positive early indications that we're showing a genuine surplus, even after removing the advance payment of the federal assistance grants, which is a strong result and reflects really solid financial management. I'd like to acknowledge the work of Tim, Glen Hart and Kelvin Tyler Lee. In a relatively short time, they've made some real improvements in council's financial performance. Revenue's tracking about 24% under budget and that's mainly due to timing around grants and contract works. On the expense side, we're seeing savings around 57%, which really helps to balance out any of those timing issues. These numbers are going to start to firm up once year-end processes and order adjustments are complete. So we'll have a clearer picture at the next report.
Thanks councillor Ballard, would anyone else like to add anything?
Yeah, through the chair, I did contact the director for finance and I asked if it's possible about a printout of fuel card used outside of Mount Isa, but I think it's going to be addressed at the fleet thing today. And the other thing I wanted to check is, I wanted to get the travel expenses for council and where that information is contained within the budget finances, including travel for councillors, employees, contractors and visitors. So I just wanted to let us know that I'd asked for that information.
The, the, all of the council's expenses are in executive services.
Okay, thank you, all in favour? Carrie. I'd like to have a mover for 11.2, Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Overview Report as at the 31st of July 2025.
I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts July 2025 Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second though?
Second Aunt Tully.
Thanks councillor Tully.
Thanks Mayor. Overall, most areas are tracking steadily, though there's some timing variances in income. Community services income is below budget, but that's largely offset by grant funding in areas like community and economic development. Charges for waste and recycling services have been issued, generating approximately $5 million in general waste revenue and $42,000 from recycling. On the business unit side, splashes was only open four days in July due to maintenance, which impacted income. But we'll be very happy to have that all well and truly behind us as we enter the warmer months. Buchanan Park and the civic centre are both operating at a deficit but within expected ranges. The batch plant's now closed and fleet and workshop slightly over budget, but income is up. Corporate services is under budget on income, though rates have been issued and expenditure is tracking well. The structure services is also under budget with major projects and maintenance progressing as planned.
Okay, thanks councillor Ballard, anything else?
Yes, through the chair, just if we could, councillor Ballard touched on it briefly, the splashes report, I'd just like to get a report on how we're going with the fixing up? Of pumps and the leak.
Through the chair, so the facility is closed to undertake some urgent works around leaks. The first stage of the works involves stripping out the expansion joints and exposing various other points on the structure where there's evidence of leaks. That's been completed, the contractor has a down week to allow the facility to dry out. You can't go in and seal immediately, otherwise you trap excess moisture behind the structure. So they've got a down week, they'll then be back on site to undertake additional sealing. We've got some scheduled maintenance happening in the pump room. There's a main pump that needs some, needs the main seals replaced, so that'll, that's coming out for a rebuild. And similarly, another small pump which feeds into the heaters developed a leak, so that'll be repaired by the plumbing crew.
Excellent, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, all in favour? Carrie. Okay, item 11.3, corporate. Okay, item eleven point three, Corporate Services Overview Report, June twenty twenty five and July twenty twenty five.
I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the June twenty twenty five and July twenty twenty five Corporate Services Overview Report as presented.
Thanks councillor Ballard. Do I have a second, Doc?
Seconding.
Thanks councillor Crowther.
Thanks ma'am. This report covers June and July. Our customer service team handled over five hundred service requests each month, with the majority relating to rates for bins, animal management and water leaks. Email volumes remained high, averaging a hundred and ten per day in June and eighty seven a day in July, with most queries directed to revenue, finance and development. While phone data isn't available this month due to system changeover, we did track after-hours calls. There was a hundred and seven in June and ninety four in July, mostly concerning water outages, roaming dogs and missed bins. We also received an average of seven letters a day in June and five in July, primarily about financial matters and animal animal registration. Across both months, over a thousand customer requests were logged and assigned across departments. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that our customer service team is often the first point of contact for community members needing help and their role is really important and these fig- figures clearly show just how busy they are in supporting the residents and keeping services running smoothly.
Thank you councillor Ballard. Any further comments? All in favour? Carrie. Item eleven point four, Annual Donation to Lifelight and Royal Flying Doctor Service. Do I have a mover?
I'd like to move that council approves to the annual donation amounting to five thousand dollars to Lifelight and five thousand dollars to Royal Flying Doctor Service.
Thank you councillor Ballard.
Seconding Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, I can probably talk to this one. This was brought up at the Rock. There was a request from all the um councils in the Rock, I think, to donate ten thousand dollars with that same split, wasn't it, C E O?
Yeah.
So I think all of our councils are doing that. Um, and I just want to make the community aware that um like our residents do use those services when you're visiting places, out camping and visiting our events in the region. Um, it's great to know that those services are there and yeah, I think um those facilities are looking amazing out there and it'll be um really great once we get those new helicopters and they're open. So we're looking forward to that and I think that will be happening in October, so very shortly.
Yes, through the mayor. I just think I really support this emotion mainly based on um where the hub of, you know, it's it has been built in our in our centre and I think we're the captain of the team, so we should be um supporting it.
Yep. All in favour?
Hang on, uh through the chair, is that, did we hold this over for this financial year? So this will be each financial year and it'll become a budgeted.
So the the request, which we can have a look at each budget, but they wanted to do it for the verbal request was for three years, so we're just, we're just doing it for this year and then, you know, we can budget for it next year and it can just be included in the budget from then on.
Thank you.
All in favour? Again, sorry?
I'm against. Can it be noted, please?
Okay, thank you. Um, item twelve point one, oh sorry, we're at the community services reports, twelve point one Waste Management Quarterly Report, May to July twenty twenty five. Would you like me to move that one councillor Coglan, while you find it?
Was lost. For twelve point one?
Yep, twelve point one.
I'll um, I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the Waste Management Quarterly Report, May to July twenty twenty five as presented.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Do I have a second, Doc?
Ballard.
Thanks councillor Ballard. Would you like to speak to that councillor Coglan?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind people that um the financial year, excuse me, it started again, so your six free dump tokens get refreshed. So um if you go out to the dump, you just simply give them your licence um and you get three, oh sorry, six free um drop-offs for your for your residential garbage. Um, so yeah, just like to remind people of that. Um, I like to save mine every two months and then I think I'm getting something extra each two months. Um, the other thing, I just, I'd like to ask a question of the director. Not on notice, but I noticed at Bunnings the other day, they have all their cardboard boxes and I think Coles and Woolies are all the same. Is that any value to us with seeing if we can use that to transport?
Uh, through the chair, just to clarify, uh in terms of whole boxes or the actual material?
The cardboard's swashed and put on, you know, like we will, we will do.
Understood. Um, so we're currently working with um our our contractors in town who provide waste services um to to direct that cardboard into the MRF. Um, clean cardboard fetches a higher price than the commodity market than mixed fibre or paper, uh and so it is valuable for us.
Through the chair, um just ask the director, I know we are looking at trying to do the amnesty days again for the people in in, you know, for residents. Um, how are we going with that?
So following direction from the chamber, um administration has submitted a grant application um to, so to support the the cost of running an amnesty day as part of um the Get Ready Queensland Programme. Um, depending on the outcome of that will be uh whether we can proceed with that as planned or whether we need to come back and talk to the chamber about funding it out of rates.
Okay, thank you for that.
Through the chair, um just regarding those um, those free tokens um on your driver's licence, that because it's such a high rental town, um some people may not have changed their licences. So I'm more than happy to go back through real estates and maybe show lease um agreements or something, just so they can get um get that free rubbish removal, um if if they're having problems at the dump.
Yeah, I'll just throw to the director for that.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair, just to reiterate um councillor's comments uh regarding the tip tokens. So council has shifted to the digital tip tokens rather than the physical ones. Um, we have had some confusion at the waybridge around the use of those. So if you are a resident and you show some I D uh at the waybridge, uh you can use one of those tokens. It's not exclusive for property owners. It's anyone who lives in town who can show I D at that point in time.
Yeah, just back to the director, through the mayor, um just that uh some people haven't changed because we are a very transit town now. Um, they are moving here and a lot of people are not changing their um licences over. So I just want to um clarify that they can come back to the real estate and show a lease agreement or something of some description to show that they are from that property if their licence doesn't um likes uh to show, you know, where they actually do live. Is that, would that be?
Absolutely. So count, the administration is conscious of allowing and make it easy for people to use those tip tokens. Um, so an electricity bill, something from your real estate agent, um your local club membership to um one of the community clubs, anything that's got some detail about you living in Mount Isa, you can use that at the waybridge uh and then you can deposit the waste at the transfer station for free.
Through the mayor, um yeah, because I mean, I think we really have to encourage people that, you know, that they they do have this ability to to utilise it.
Yeah.
So um we've probably got to spread the word a little bit through media um to um, you know, some of these yards do need cleaning up. If they could do it for nothing, I mean, I think it's going to be a big benefit to Mount Isa.
Yeah, particularly prior to storm season, like we said, that Get Ready campaign. And also director, speaking of ke- keeping things out of landfill and circular economy, did you want to speak to the garage sale initiative that you've been working on?
Absolutely. Um, thank you for the opportunity. So um as a part of the uh a national community event called the Garage Sale Trail, we will be promoting that event here in Mount Isa. Uh, it will be a combination of promoting um the use of the tip shop out at the the landfill once that's that's launched, as well as a media and comms campaign to promote a series of garage sales across the city. The core idea is to um avoid material going into landfill. A lot of the behaviour we see at the um at the transfer station is that when people are moving, um they often don't have time to to get rid of useful objects. Uh, so whether it's furniture, whether it's small electronics goods, um sporting equipment. Uh, unfortunately, that often goes into landfill because people don't have the time and capacity to sell it online or um the op shops don't have space for it. So the event will promote people having garage sales. It'll work as a as a trail across the city uh and it'll be a great community event.
Thank you. Okay, all in favour? Carrie. Um, item twelve point two, Mount Isa CBD Master Plan. Do I have a mover for that motion?
I'd like to move that council endorses the Mount Isa CBD Master Plan Report as presented.
Uh, thank you councillor Coglan. Do I have a second, Doc?
Seconding Tully.
Thanks councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak to this?
Yeah, I just, I don't like our CBD master plan. I don't think it's suitable for Mount Isa. Um, and I think we should be concentrating on tidying up what we've got rather than uh spending money trying to add things into our CBD.
Any further comments?
Through the chair, can I just um get clarification, um as we spoke about it in the workshop on this? By adopting the master plan of the CBD, we're not saying that we're going to do everything on there, but it does tick a box when we go for funding. Is that correct, uh, i- is that correct, uh, is that correct, director?
Uh, through the chair.
Corrector-director, over to you.
That is correct, madam deputy mayor. Um, it's, this is to formalise an existing piece of work that council was invested in before we proceed to any next steps. Uh, that would be at the direction of the chamber in terms of um where that fits in our operations plan, as well as any um, any funding that council may or may not want to put towards it. So it doesn't commit council to anything. It opens up additional opportunities to pursue external funding through grants.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, and I guess through, um I wasn't here obviously for that meeting, but looking at you through the pictures, you can see there was a lot of community consultation um that took place in putting together that plan. Um, these plans cost money, so um I think we can't go and get new plans every time we have a new council, so I'm happy to keep that one on the record and it just gives us a direction of where we need to be moving towards as we look at new projects, I guess, and as funding becomes available.
Okay, all in favour? Oh, do I need to wait till councillor Tully comes back? No. Would you like that noted against councillor Coglan?
Yes, please.
Okay. Carrie. Um, item twelve point three, Request for Change of Scope, Sycoran Martial Arts. Do I have a mover for twelve point three?
Yes, uh recommend that the council approves Sycoran Martial Arts Inc. Request for a change of scope for their approved funding received in round two, twenty twenty four, twenty five, community grants funding and grant an extension to the completion date.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Do I have a second for the motion?
Seconded deputy.
Thank you deputy mayor. Do um, does anyone need to speak to that? Did you just want to explain what this is about?
Yeah, it's just the Sycoran Martial Arts Inc., they were successful in being awarded um five thousand dollars uh council community grant in round two uh for the project purchase and install new A C ducting and flashing. Due to their contra- contractor request to proceed, they commenced and completed the project before funding was approved.
Thank you. Okay, all in favour? Carrie. Okay, item twelve point four, Application for Conversion to Freehold Lot Forty Two Crown Land Plan eight four seven one five seven. Do I have a mover?
Like to move that council resolves to advise the Department of Natural Resources and Mines, Manufacturing and Regional and Rural Development that one, council supports the application for conversion to Freehold of Lot Forty Two Crown Plan eight four seven one five seven. Subject to A, the applicant is to enter into discussions with council's chief executive officer or delegate and come to satisfactory terms agreed to by both parties in relation to the roads off alignment. And B, all costs associated with the application are to be borne by the applicant. Two, council provides images reference Lot Forty Two C P eight four seven one five seven dash R D O one dash one one as reference to roads off alignment and note that this information is based on a desktop exercise. And three, council is unaware if Lot Forty Two Crown Plan eight four seven one five seven has any local non-indigenous cultural heritage values.
Seconding Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak to this?
It's just a process, through the mayor, or just a process that we have, they've um, they got to ask the council first and then it's um really a process that they do with, through the Nas- Department of Natural Resources and Mines.
Okay, all in favour? Carrie. Okay, item twelve point five, North Queensland Sports Foundation, twenty twenty five. North Queensland Sports Star Awards, councillor delegation. Do I have a mover?
Yeah, move that the council approves for the North Queensland Sports Foundation delegates. Uh, I'm assuming that's me and councillor Tully to assess the local nominations for the twenty twenty five, no?
Yes, the Tully's been dropped.
Oh, I got benched.
S- sorry, can we just clarify that? Are you not on the North Queensland Sports Foundation?
No, no, you asked on the committee, voting.
Voting, yeah.
Voting. I'll take over.
James, Coglan and myself, yeah. To assess the local nominee.
Yes, would you like to read it and put the names in there and just putting out there that this wasn't pre-decided? It was just maybe
Yeah.
thrown out there that this could be an option.
Um, the delegates will be councillor James Coglan and myself to do the voting. Um, and councillor Tully's still on the the board. Um, but we'll assess the local nominations for the twenty twenty five North Queensland Sports Star Awards and select the relevant nominees um per category as council submission to the North Queensland Sports Foundation. And that council delegates the C E O to negotiate and approve financial assistance to local nominees who attend the Sports Star Awards, subject to budget availability.
I'm happy to um second that motion. Does anyone want to speak to that?
Uh, just the overview here, the North Queensland Sports Stars Awards um open twenty fifth, they open on twenty fifth of July twenty twenty five and close seventh of September twenty twenty five. Submissions from council are due to the North Queensland Sports Foundation on the twenty second of September. Due to the short period of time for assessment, it is not possible to put the nominations through the council for ratification.
Thank you, and that's the same process that we pretty much follow every year since, yeah, time began. Um, through the chair, could I just um, for, we have got a strong sporting community in Mount Isa, but excuse me, um just for people, it's for people within sporting organisations. It it's not just for players, it's also for administrators, it's for coaches, it, you know, there's a a variety of um applications, so maybe if council could do a little bit more of a push on that of actually what what the categories are. Um, because most people would think it's just mainly for people playing and that, but administration and coaching and volunteering also goes a long way towards it, umpiring as well, I suppose. So, yeah.
Okay, all in favour?
Sorry, I'm too loud.
You're trying to tell a
Are you in favour?
I'm in favour.
Thank you Carrie. Okay, um, item thirteen, Infrastructure Services Reports, thirteen point one, Major Projects Overview Report, July twenty twenty five.
Recommendation that the council receives and notes July two thousand and twenty five Major Projects Overview Report. Endorsement of the Mundara Road, shoulder reconstruction, reseal of the Duchess and Duchess Road, flood protection design and partial works at the Transport Infrastructure Development Scheme, which is a T I D S project. Project will be delivered within the twenty five, twenty six financial year. No change to twenty five, twenty six. Total T I D S budget of nine fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty thousand required. Approve the inclusion of the Northwest Mineral Province, Lake Mundara Lines Youth Camp Project, two hundred thousand residential aviation fund, Gliderport Road and road infrastructure at Healy Height Project, two million dollars in the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six capital works budget.
Thank you councillor Tully. Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconding.
Thanks councillor Crowther. Would you like to speak to that councillor Tully?
Um, no, I think it's, no.
Self-explanatory?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favour?
I have some, some questions about this, the major projects. Um, first one is in regards to the fence at Captain Cook Pass. Um, can somebody provide a reasoning why we've put a fence up that actually increases the risk to people rather than reduces it? If we can get some feedback for the um, for the chamber.
Um, when, when you mean the fence, do you mean that railing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Because
Along the footpath.
Along the footpath. It actually increases the risk to people rather than reduce it. So, you know, it's been there fifty years and now we've put a
So, you know, it's been there fifty years and now we've put a fence in it, makes it more dangerous. I don't, I can't understand the decision-making behind it. Um, the Duchess Road extension to Spreadborough Estate, um, we plan that for the twenty five, twenty six financial year, it says in the major projects. Does that mean that project will be completed this year or we just completed um planning for it this year? No, the Spreadborough, past Lagoon Creek, is there a timeline that we can give residents or?
I might hand over to the, the director for that. The, the reasoning for the railing, I'll just give an answer for the railing on um, on the footpath. I wasn't a big fan of it either, but the reality is um, we had to meet the uh, the funding requirements. So where, where a drop is in excess of one metre, you're supposed to mitigate the, the, the safety requirements. And that was a basically a, um, we went, because we went back to the funding agency and said, look, do we really have to do this? Um, you know, we weren't, like, I in particular wasn't particularly in favour of it because I just think it was more onerous than it needed to be, but that, the reality is we had to meet the, the funding guidelines and that's what they were, so they're, they're a sort of a state enforced sort of guideline. So there wasn't anything else we could do about it.
Through the mayor, when it, when it comes up like that, Tim, are we allowed to question those sort of um, if we, if we do disagree with it, like, I mean, and, and we have good grounds to do that?
We did disagree with it.
Yeah.
Um, we, because, I mean, we had a bit of a conversation around that at the, one of the workshops and said, you know, we're not particularly in favour of it, but we went, and, and I, I raised that with, well, Andrew raised it in particular uh because of his background, but basically the ruling was that, you know, once you're um, once you're over that one metre sort of fall, that you've got to meet the, you've got to meet the regulations, so, and because it was basically funded in the main by them, there wasn't really anything we can do about it, so.
The, the issue is now, we've, we've put that fence on, we can now fall, I measured it yesterday, it's two point five metres, that someone can fall from the top of that thing. Because it's right on the edge.
You can't, you can't regulate for stupidity, for want of a better term, but, I mean, the idea is that the in, the incidental act, well, I'm, as I said, I don't agree with it. Uh, but the, the, the thinking behind it is that it's, it's mitigating people that are genuinely doing this right thing. Like if a kid jumps on top of the railing and wants a skateboard on it, which I'm not ruling out as a possibility, um, you can't, you can't, you can't sort of regulate for that, so, but that's, that's the, it's a, it's a guideline that was enforced.
I may also throw into that mix just something for council to consider is where we do have engineering standards that specify um control measures such as that, if we do decide to go against it, and then we're diving into the realm of an engineering decision. Um, if we decide as a council to go against those design standards or design requirements, then that really should be risk assessed and a proper assessment and recommendation made by a registered engineer. Where that doesn't occur, you certainly would then open yourself up to liability um issues if you go against those design standards. Something to, to bear in mind as well.
So through the chair, if we follow the design standards and something happens, it can be thrown back at the government.
It, it certainly is a, and, and the, we're diving into a legal area that, that is my area of expertise, but I, I would um suggest that we would open ourselves up to additional liability if we made the decision to go against those design standards without that engineering backup.
Yeah, that did answer the question.
I think, I think what the directors say is, you're always open to a legal claim. It's, it, you know, it doesn't matter what you do as a council in terms of a, of a claim, but what you're doing is mitigating the potential claimants, um, you know, the amount of the claim or the, whatever it ends up being. So you, you're never at complete and total exoneration of risk, but you're, you're taking the least possible. Yeah, the path of least resistance.
But through the chair, I just, I don't think we fight hard enough with people in Brisbane that don't actually come up here and this is just, this isn't an isolated incident.
We had a fair argument.
The um, being in the, in the north, and, and trust me, in my career I've come across this issue quite a number of times, various issues. Um, but being outside of Brisbane doesn't necessarily protect us when it comes down to that liability issue as well. Um, the standards do apply to us.
Yeah, I understand that, but they're making decisions down there and they haven't actually, you know, they're looking at a photo, I mean.
Yep, and, and, and that's why it's important that, that we do have the ability to go through that risk assessment process and make those engineering decisions, but it is also an onerous process then to go through and ensure that we are covering off on, on all the issues raised.
I think where it's our own source funding, it's a different issue to external source funding. Because, I mean, we don't, we, you know, there is no way we would have been able to do the project of our own back or continue with the project without the support of the state. So sometimes you just have to accept their decision-making processes.
Yeah, no, I, I would think a risk assessment would have identified to put the rail back, not right on the lip.
Yeah.
Um, and I would think that we would be doing that risk assessment and making that decision unless the regulation forbid it.
Okay, thank you, all in favour? Carrie. Sorry, was there a thirty two? No, okay, item fourteen, general business, I'll throw to councillor Ballard, thank you.
Thanks ma'am. I want to acknowledge the incredible success of this month's events, the street parade, the Melbourne Express and the rodeo. Mount Isa was a hive of activity and the energy was infectious. It was wonderful to see so many locals and visitors enjoying themselves. These events brought our community together and offered something for everyone. Huge crowds turned out and the week was an overwhelming success. We should be incredibly proud of the rodeo week, not just the events, but as a symbol of our identity. The support shown by the community was outstanding and well and truly marked that Mount Isa is alive and well and our community spirit is strong. A big congratulations to all the organisers, volunteers and supporters, all your efforts are what made it possible. And September is shaping up as yet another month for vibrant events in our community with standouts such as the Spring Cup and Multicultural Festival on the horizon. If you haven't already made plans, I encourage you to come along, show your support for the organisers and take full advantage of the beautiful weather before our warmer months set in. On another note, I'd like to highlight the council was recently named as a finalist in the Far North Queensland GIS Awards in the category of Geospatial Award for Environmental Impact. The nominated project, our Mount Isa Home Recycling Launch, used an interactive GIS tool to help residents easily find their new bin days during the rollout of yellow-litred recycling bins. We didn't take home the award, but it was a credit to our community services team that the Mount Isa City Council has recognised among the leading geospatial projects in the region and it's a great example of how we're using technology to improve services and support sustainability.
Thank you councillor Ballard, um councillor Doyle.
Um, yeah, just wanted to reiterate that about the um, the rodeo, um, it was amazing, he's done a great job. Um, all the committee, it was good to see it um, community-driven and, and for our community, so I really enjoyed it. Um, my kids enjoyed it, my whole family, so thanks to those guys. Um, the street parade was great, good to see we had extra lollies this time. Um, we can still get more, but um, no, that was really good. Um, it's good to see the public turn out and see um, you know, who we are and, and also all the the schools and everybody else and their floats and stuff, I, I really enjoy it, my kids do. Um, we've had um, a couple of kids going away for athletics, we've had, so just talking to what um deputy Coglan's talking about, um, our community and the talent that we have here, we have so much natural talent here, um, right across all sports. Um, it's, it's really, really um awesome to see, you know, the, the amount of skill and talent that we have across here. I really wish we could just get somebody to, from all over the coast and down south to come here and really just pick these people and, and give them as much as they can to progress even more and develop even more. Well, that's the alarm. Um, yeah, so we've had kids going away for athletics, we've had um, men and women going away. We've had um, the Isa Warriors boys doing rugby union and rugby league. Uh, we've got the school footy coming up um this, this week, starting tomorrow. Um, the, the boys in the football as well and the girls are starting to do tackle. So we've got a lot of things happening within our sporting community, um, and it's good to see it thriving and um, yeah, I really enjoy, you know, our talent that we have out here.
Thank you councillor Doyle, um councillor Crowther.
Uh, yeah, just quickly, obviously with the rodeo, it was a great success and well done to the board uh for bringing that out. Uh, the street fest, I liked councillor Doyle said, we had a great time on the, on the float and managed to get to the end of the line uh with still a couple of lollies left in hand. I think that's because councillor Tully was tied up and wasn't on the, on lolly throwing.
Doyle's off next year.
But we did manage to get to the end of the line, there's still some lollies there, so it was a great success. And actually the vibe of the um, the street fest, I think a lot of people commented that we're sort of, as our aim was to get it back to a bit of a, back to the old school feel where it's sort of just a bit of a party in the street and that. And obviously we did that on a lot less budget and sort of still got that same feedback, so, which was great to see. Uh, councillor Doyle mentioned the athletics, I'd sort of travelled with my son and we went to the um Longreach there to compete with all the other kids and even the masters at the Outback Sunset Carnival. Um, man was represented with pride, sportsmanship and some great results. We had um, I think there was a, in the masters there, a um, a um, a new record set, which was great to see. And um, and the masters that are competing there, Jacob and um Sunny, they were sort of unreal to see that they were sort of getting in there and showing the young guys how, with, the older guys can still uh get some results there, which is good to see. Uh, just a quick share that to all the police officers who received their service medals and commendations at the twenty twenty five district awards ceremony and stuff and councillor Coglan was there. Um, deputy mayor I meant, um, uh, there was some outstanding sort of um service achievements. I think there was a thirty five year um medal awarded. Um, they're sort of obviously, they're doing their best to keep our community safe and it's deeply appreciated. Uh, and finally, thank you to Maria and Jen from Mites with their work in bringing the EU delegation to Mount Isa recently. Um, gave us a great opportunity to showcase um what our region has to offer um and build, and build some important relationships which can open the door for future opportunities. So that was about the month.
Yeah, and thanks for the councillors that attended that as well, it looked like a great event. Um, councillor Tully?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to um, uh, thank um the council especially um for the support they've given the rodeo board this year. Um, through, through their efforts and all you fellows here. And also the town people, the road players of Mount Isa, their support was, was overwhelming, it was just unbelievable. Um, tonight, the night show was um, you know, we had negative people towards us, but I mean, I think the positive side, they showed um, Mount Isa to be a place to live, an opportunity to, to come and, you know, with a young family and live here. So I think they've done an exceptional job and um well-supported after the event, more so than before the event. Um, the street festival, we just, the feedback that I'm getting is um going back to the old way of having that whole street there. I think we can grow off that next year. I think it's um, it was really, really well respected and, and people really enjoyed it compared to past years. So I'd just like to read something that someone sent and it might take a couple of minutes, but I write from the southern highlands of New South Wales to congratulate you all on an incredible Mount Isa Rodeo two thousand and twenty five. I hope you find your way to the event managers and the board. I attended this year with my family, having been visiting, visiting in Townsville. We saw the media stories in Townsville and extended our stay for four days as a bucket list experience. I worked for a considerable time with tourism in New South Wales and understand the value of major events to a region and a state. Also know what it takes to put them on and to gather the support we needed. What you have done, the board, is fantastic, bringing this event back from the brink, not only resuscitating, but making it shine so brightly, it ju, in just six months, it's truly remarkable. Yes, people are talking about it even in New South Wales. The Indigenous rodeo was wonderful to experience. Congratulations also on having a leader like Sammy Friday on board. I have a special congratulation to whoever run your media. The stories I read, watched and listened to in New South Wales and Victoria were all about people and people of rodeo, especially the women, kids and family behind the rodeo and the stars rising up. There was even a story about Elvis, that the day you show was something most events dream about. Well done to having a crew there and also the stories told and the stories that were organised throughout the programme. What a job, great, well done. Media coverage everywhere was everywhere and was all positive and very, very good. I don't know what that meant to me. I don't know how hard this is to generate, so whatever you have, keep them up. The whole PR programme was a masterclass in experience and passion. Another, another call out to the management and your leadership committee. I am friends with two of the state government ministers who attended, both raved about their experiences. How they, how there was no prompt or ceremony, no scheduling them from the action, they just loved it. One more, your web shot, your website is great, it's easy to navigate, it works, so many don't. You have a great formula, we are coming again next year and we'll make sure I meet you all and shake hands. We need our leaders to operate like you all in New South Wales for our regional rural events. I don't suppose you'd all come down south. So that's just one of the ones that, you know, that sort of stuck me and I thought it was bloody, um, yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, thank you councillor Tully for reading that, that was, yeah, and, yeah, you all did a fantastic job. That was dead on the money. Okay, councillor Coglan?
Yeah, firstly I'd like to say that um, I think the executive team and, and Tim and the directors, I think you've done a good job. Um, I think you're um certainly making up lost ground or ground that has been lost by the council, so well done for that. Um, however, last week I wrote to the premier's office and minister for local government asking for a review of the legislation. Because I don't think, uh, I think it's corrected itself too far. Um, and I think it's limiting the input of councils, councillors to strategy only is not a good thing. Um, I look around here and I see people who have coached teams and we've got strategy and philosophies in place, but it means nothing if people take the field and they don't follow it. Um, and I can only speak for myself, but I look around here and there's two hundred and sixty five years worth of experience in Mount Isa sitting here. Three hundred years worth of experience in northwest Queensland sitting here in this chamber. Um, and I, I don't think um, we take advantage of that enough. And I look around and I see a majority of us who are still going to be here in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years' time. So I think our input into decisions is important. Um, we're the voice of Mount Isa, we don't need analysis and surveys and consultants in a lot of cases because the reason we're here is to give the voice to people of Mount Isa. If they don't like it, the decisions that are made, then we're going to get turfed out in two and a half years. And if we're going to get turfed out, I want it to be for decisions that I'm involved in, I'm okay with that. We need to listen to locals, the rodeo is the best example I've seen. The previous administration ignored the locals and they paid the price. This year it was a roaring success because you gave the locals what they want. Um, I was disappointed in the presentation of the CBD. If anybody here remembers, and we may be talking, you know, nostalgia and all that, but you used to walk down West Street and Mile Street and it was, it was just covered. You know, we put up a couple of coloured bunting two days before the street parade, that's not good enough for the people of this town. There's no banners like highlighting the, the rodeo action, there was no banner across the street, there was no music. And in fact, and I think I said at the workshop, there was more signs advertising the Club Curry Merry Mustard than our own rodeo. If we want people to be proud of our town and put in, then we need to lead the way. And it used to be every business in town, if you didn't get dressed up for rodeo, you were the exception. Well, now it's turned around and I can only think of one business I went into that was dressed up. So we need to lead the way if we want the businesses in our town to, to come together. I've already made my um feelings about the auction known, but I'd like to talk about the Lions Youth Camp. It's called the Lions Youth Camp, that was the original reason that it was put up for the youth of this city. I went on Facebook um because I've seen people were criticizing um things. And they were, they were all directed, every time they said something, they were directed to fill out the survey. And people said to me, no, it's just that biased. So I went to the survey and I did it and all I kept saying, seeing was short stay accommodation. That Lions Youth Camp, if it goes to short stay accommodation, it's going to serve people who come. That Lions Youth Camp, if it goes to short stay accommodation, it's going to serve people who come to this town for one week in their life. It needs to be used for the schools and the young people of this town need to use that place and that should be it. We don't need a survey for that. You've got seven people here who can make those decisions and that's our job to make those decisions. And I don't think that the decisions are being come to us before we set, we seek funding and so forth. Um I think we need more consultation before we start engaging in things. I'd like to congratulate two young men, Sid McKeon and Blake Chouazie. Um Sid's mother works here. Edie, Edie, I always get it wrong. Um they've been selected to tour America for soccer. And it goes to your point about the the talent here. I mean, you know, you don't have to leave here until you get to that bit older age, but congratulations to them. They're busy fundraising. Um and it shows how isolation can be overcome with dedication. We'd like to wish the best to the Mount Isa Touch, who hold their grand finals tonight and Friday, and also Nepal and Sokolwitsch are coming up. It's a great time of year, August and September, and a big congratulations to your rodeo committee. It was fantastic. And also the Malmun Express, um just unbelievable, really came back strong this year, so good on yous. And I'd like so, also like to reiterate what the mayor said about those who were involved in organising the Today Show. Um yeah, it was well worth the time, effort and money. And there was criticism, but I think that that decision, this chamber got right. And I think you should be congratulated for that. We're starting to get back on track and I think there's a lot of hard work going in, so. And it shows we're starting to get back on track because I see the Queensland government is stealing our city of opportunity and now calling Queensland the land of opportunity. So, you know, it's a case of the country leading the city.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Deputy mayor?
Um I'd just like a question. We're doing a lot of work mulching the riverbeds and cleaning out the drains and all that. I'm just want to go through the chair and ask the director, director, are we, after we do that, are we poisoning to make sure that it doesn't regrow?
Uh through the chair. So we do have a programme for managing the weeds. Uh as the chamber be aware, we've secured funding to do a coordinated programme throughout the river, the wider catchment and the creeks. Um it doesn't, I think the community can see that we've got a problem with species like Gluckena uh across the catchment. It propagates very quickly as soon as those seeds hit the ground. Um because it is a river, we're constrained by what we can do in terms of spraying. Um so we can't go through and just dump heap of glyphosate. But the biosecurity team does have a plan for going back and managing the regrowth. Um so ideally, that's through some spot spraying uh with the Frog Safe, it's called a Frog Safe poison, but a poison that's okay for water catchments. Um we're also um testing some best practice methods around um leaving mulch in place because that suppresses the regrowth. Uh and we've then got it scheduled for some mechanical removal where that's needed.
Okay then. Um I just, we've also got, I'd like to thank Bob Jaikman and um Pat Breen, who have donated um some items that are going to be uh given to the historical department at the library. Uh Bob has got a history of Mount Isa Rugby League. He's got a lot of old paperwork, old records and that, that he'd like donated to the historical society and also, historical room, sorry. And then also Pat Breen has um given us the nineteen seventy three flood reports that when we had the bad flood in seventy three, all the written reports that were worked on by all the different, um like our local disaster management group. It was probably the same thing all those years back. So I'll organise with the director next week to have them presented to the library. Um would like to reiterate what um councillor Coglan said about congratula- uh best of luck to all the sporting groups that are playing their finals. Um congratulations to Lake Nash, who downed the buffaloes um last Saturday. Um and um and just as a very, uh probably a very proud mother moment, and I know the mayor doesn't like me saying it, but I'm just going to big note my crack. Um my um, my son uh won the NBL One Basketball Championships in Brisbane and it was a great success story for Mount Isa for, not just for that reason. And goes back to what councillor Doyle said about dedication and all that. Um he left Mount Isa because he had a little bit of a dream. He did get to his dream, but he succeeded it and he actually won the championships, you know. But he was coached by another Mount Isa kid in Peter Crawford, who Olympian, uh played for the Brisbane Bullets, went up to Townsville. And then even further back, he went to Brisbane and did his training with the Brian Curl Academy, which he's still at, and Brian Curl has ties to Mount Isa as well. So it was really great to see and um I mean, um couldn't get down there for both games, but it's in our wonderful world of technology. I know a lot of people were on KO uh watching the game and um the Southern District Spartans should be congratulated on what they've done there. Um nineteen years it's taken them to um get that other award. And it was really good that the um commentators and even Peter in the speeches all kept sneaking the little Mount Isa in there. So, I mean, it's all free publicity really, but just congratulations um really to my son, to Peter and to um Brian Curl as well and Toby, his son, and all the management at the Curl Basketball Academy for the work they do down there. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. And um I'll just add something I left out of um my merril minute, that we're um sending a letter to the Isa to thank them for their cooperation with us with the street festival for putting up the stage and supplying the entertainment because that, you know, was a considerable saving for us.
Yeah, through the mayor, um they did, they were over the moon with the new setup. Though um I've talked to the manager and um he was, he was, couldn't believe how much more um uh income he made, I guess, for that for that period of time compared to past years.
Yeah, so we'll send them some correspondence.
It was less, less, less cost to the council, which is um what we want and still, and people seem happier.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um I'd like to move that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve. Um item fifteen point one, Myco Finance Overview Report, July twenty twenty five. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J G of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which the public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Item fifteen point two, request to waiver outstanding balance owing for debt of three oh seven oh seven. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J D of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions. Item fifteen point three, the John Miles City Lookout. This matter is considered to be confidential under two seven five E of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with contracts proposed to be made by it. Item fifteen point four, sun water supply agreement. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two seven five E of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with contracts proposed to be made by it. Item fifteen point five, Mount Isa Critical Minerals and Rare Earths Research Facility feasibility study. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with the local government's budget. Do I have a second for that motion, please?
Seconded, deputy.
Thank you, deputy mayor. All in favour?
I read.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All in favour?
I'll move that council receives and accepts the July 2025 Myco Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Crowther. Do I have a second?
Seconding Tully.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. All in favour? Carried. Oh, yep. Council Ballau's declaring a perceived conflict with this one. A 15.2, request to waiver outstanding balance owing for debtor 30707. Do I have a mover for that?
I'll move that council approves to waiver the outstanding balance of $20,777.74 on debtor account 30707, invoice eight, previously invoice 2914713 issued on the 18th of the 11th, 2022, for animal empowerment fees, fines and penalties under section 7.3 of council sundry debtor recovery policy due to financial hardship.
Thank you, Councilor Crowther. Do I have a second?
Seconding Tully.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. All in favour? Carried. Again. Okay. Item 15.3, the John Campbell Mile City Lookout. Do I have a mover?
How old must I move? I recommend that council appoints Oka Constructions Pity Limited as the preferred tenderer for the construction of the John Campbell Mile City Lookout Revitalisation Project Area One as per public tender 2024-58, subject to successful negotiation of the second stage of value engineering options to reduce the tendered figure of $3,990...
Three million.
No. Three million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety cents to the budgeted figure of 3.5 million. B, delegate authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate, finalise and enter into contract substantively in the terms of the contract issued with the tender.
Thank you, Councilor Coghlan. Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconding Tully.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. All in favour? Carried. Item 15.4, Sun Water Water Supply Agreement. Do I have a mover?
I'd like to move that council approves the variation of the supply contract river held between Mount Isa City Council and Sun Water Limited for reduced tariffs and a temporary trade of water from council to Sun Water as per option seven tabled in this report, and delegate to the chief executing officer to negotiate, finalise and enter into the contract variation.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconding Tully.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. All in favour? Carried. Mark me against that one. Item 15.5, Mount Isa Critical Minerals and Rare Earths Research Facility Feasibility Study. Do I have a mover?
The council engages Maven Libera Capital to undertake the Mount Isa Critical Minerals and Rare Earths Research Centre full feasibility study up to the value of $565,000 excluding GST under the provisions of section 235b of the Local Government Regulation 2012, and delegates to the CEO to negotiate, finalise and enter into the engagement.
Thank you, Councilor Ballau. Do I have a second?
Seconding.
Thank you, Councilor Crowther. All in favour? Carried. Before we close the meeting, I'll just note that the last version of the North West Weekly has just come out, called the Last Version of the North West Weekly. So I'd just like to, on behalf of council, thank Matt for the work that he's put in for the community in running that over the last 12 to 18 months. Thank you. It is now 11:50.